This conference will now be recorded.
Lanthea, second.
Okay.
All right, Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
I will. Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanthea?
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Corby, aye.
Motion passed.
Order of business is to introduce our two new staff in the office, Brooklyn Thomas and Marina Pacheco. And I wondered if we could just go around the room and so everybody could introduce themselves.
Well, I can start. I'm trustee Frank Galusha. I've been a trustee for approximately seven years. And I'd like to welcome you both. It's nice to have you.
Thank you. Hi, I'll go second. Hi, I'm trustee Lanthea and I'm happy to say I've already met you both and looking forward to working with you. You're both terrific. I'm so excited. And that's it. I've been a trustee for eight years.
Renee?
I'll go next. I'm Renee Stetzer. Nice to meet you. I am the newest trustee. I've only been here for almost two years. It feels like 800 years given this last year, but that's, that's all. I'm very excited to have you join the team. We definitely need your help.
And? And I'm trustee Dan Keating. Nice to see you guys. I've been a trustee for three years. Looking forward to working with you and glad you're aboard.
And let me just introduce the other people we have here tonight. We have Margot Fass, who's the founder of a Frog House and is working on some environmental projects here in the village. And we have two presenters, Jackie Edner and Patty Love, who will be giving presentations tonight. And also for Brooklyn and Marina, Casey Dunlevy owns the lot, is a partner in the Lock 32 Microbrewery, a business on Shane Place that's been very successful on our waterfront. So with that said, I have a couple of reminders tonight since we are having some presentations. To be courteous, please don't interrupt speakers. And if we do have that situation, what I'm going to do is just recess the meeting to give everybody a little break. But ask for your patience and give everybody courtesy and respect as we move forward tonight. So with that being said, we have to do the, are there any conflict of interest or any issues that would cause the appearance of a conflict of interest on any of our agenda items tonight? I do not have any issues.
And I have nothing to declare. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Lanthea, I do not.
Trustee Stetzer, I do not.
Same. I do not. Trustee Keating?
Thank you, everyone. And I would suggest, since we have two presenters, I'm going to skip over our reports and since Jackie Edner is here, introduce her and representing the Color Pittsburgh Green Initiative. And Jackie, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you. I actually had a couple of slides. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yep.
I believe it is.
There we go. Okay. So it's nice to be with everyone tonight. Thanks for having me in. I just wanted to start out by giving you a little bit of background on who I am and the motivation for the proposal that we're bringing towards you two tonight. Then if I could just step back and talk a little bit about the broader problem of food waste, putting that proposal in context. And then hopefully we can have a little brief discussion on it, maybe next steps or any questions that you might have. And I believe that Robert Putney from Impact Earth is going to be joining us and he'll be on hand to answer some questions. So just a little bit about my background. Unfortunately, I can't figure out a view where I can see you as well. So I guess I'll wait to hear if anyone wants to stop me with a question and I'll just go back to the presentation. A little bit about my background. I started my career as an engineer, mechanical engineer, got an MBA from the Simon School. And early achievements in my career were at Xerox where I was an operations manager and strategy manager. And really got some early experience in the field of sustainability as we pioneered some new sustainable business models and things that we now call sustainability and design for sustainability and circular economy models. That kind of inspired me to go back to RIT where I got my PhD in sustainability from the Galasano Institute of Sustainability. And there, my research really focused on food waste and in particular, food waste in New York State. With some expertise in what we call lifecycle assessment, understanding impacts of a product or service across its whole lifecycle. And a little bit on food waste to energy and waste to energy and alternative energy. Since graduating, I've taught at RIT in their Saunders School of Business, the Department of Public Policy, the Galasano Institute of Sustainability, as well as RIT Dubai. And currently I'm a visiting lecturer on the faculty of Bard College in their MBA program, which recently was awarded the number one sustainable MBA program in the country. I also consult in sustainability. Particular areas that I consult in are the circular economy and closed-loop processes, a little bit on behavioral modification and community-based social marketing and carbon footprinting and carbon accounting are some of the areas that I've done particular work in. I also started a nonprofit here in Telk, called the Rochester Interfaith Climate Action, which is an organization of individuals and institutions of faith that are trying to make a meaningful impact on climate change. I started to work with the group Color Pittsburgh Green. Just, I think we've been, we're still in the formation stage, I think we'd say. And early mission statement for the group is citizens at the municipal and neighborhood level, empowered to incorporate individual efforts to system-level environmental solutions with a focus on climate. And some of the ways that we believe we can do that is to work with the town and the village and other programs to coordinate and support education and outreach programs through webinars or websites, social media content, programs, live programs such as at the library or displays around town. To advise the village, town and their boards on issues important to the residents. So collecting research, providing some data, vetting problems and solutions and opportunities. And coordination with the Climate Accelerator, formerly known as the Rochester People's Climate Coalition or RPCC. And other Color Your Community Green efforts. There are now several in lots of the different towns around Monroe County. And to benchmark and connect with other communities to share best practices and lessons learned. That's really the context of where we're coming to you with this particular initiative. But the last bullet here is to support, you know, opportunities for funding or research if there is a town grant writer, which was a recent position that was added. So in the context of the second bullet, you know, we've identified an issue that has come up as something that the people on the Color Your Community Green, Color Pittsburgh Green community think is an important issue to residents. And we're trying to bring it forward and have some discussions. We met so far with Stephanie Townsend of the town. And she was very receptive to the proposal and suggested that we come in and meet with you. And that's what we're doing here today. So the problem of food waste, about a third of the food produced for human consumption is lost or wasted worldwide. So that's pretty amazing statistic. And food waste is the single largest component taking up space in US landfills. A recent study locally by Labella, I'm not sure if it's published yet, but did a waste characterization study and found that about 30% of the residential and commercial municipal waste was food waste. And the problem with food waste going to the landfill is that in a landfill, food waste decays anaerobically, creating methane, which is a very powerful greenhouse gas, 28 to 36 times more potent than carbon dioxide. So we were very pleased to see that in the, whoops, I guess I can't click there. In the Pittsburgh Village 2019 Comprehensive Plan, one of the visions was champion of sustainable practices. And within that, there were the activity of increased resident awareness of and participation in programs to reduce waste, combat pollution and improve local climate resiliency. And under that was number five, create a community compost program. The timeframe being three to five years and some local partners and, and I'm not sure what that last column means. Maybe you guys know. PB action, village board action, I guess. Yes. It also ties into another action, which was support the use of alternative resources and green infrastructure to reduce the village's carbon footprint. And this action number one, consider becoming a climate smart community through the New York State Energy Research and Development Agency, Iserda. So Climate Smart Community Program has a list of actions that communities can earn points from achieving. And you'll see that under the priority element, number four, that there are quite a few items related to food waste. And in particular, a residential organic waste program is worth between two and 22 points. So I'm not sure how familiar you are with the rating categories, but that's a pretty substantial contribution. I think the lowest level is 120 points for bronze. So that's a good contribution can be gained through residential organic waste program. And this was one of the things that the town also found attractive in aligning with their goals. And just as an aside, there is a recent law passed in 2019, taking effect January 1st, 2022, that requires food donation and food scrap recycling. So businesses that generate an annual average of two tons of wasted food per week or more are required to donate excess edible food and recycle all remaining scraps. So that means sending it to composting or some other recycling option like anaerobic digestions. So this is targeting larger generators at the start of the law, but the goal is to really bring it down to all generators. So the earlier we can be prepared with composting programs in place, the better position we'll be for when this law really rolls down to everybody. So one of the things that we looked into was what other programs are happening around other communities. And this is, you know, some of the work that I do as a consultant. So there are really lots of different programs that we've looked at and that we've benchmarked. New York City has a composting program. We looked at similar sized cities. The town of Marinac, New York, West Duster County is about a similar population to the town of Pittsburgh. And they have implemented a food scrap collection program. Tompkins County, Ontario, Toronto in Ontario, Canada, and Anandaga County. But looking at some local programs, the town of Geneva has a drop-off at the Town Transfer Station. The residents pay a $15 annual fee for a recycling permit, and this is included in their recycling permit. They dump a bucket that is serviced by Impact Earth now, used to be another company that did it natural upcycling. But Impact Earth has taken over that contract and they haul it to the Flint, Ontario landfill. Just as an aside, they also have a backyard composting program that they implemented with Cornell Cooperative Extension. The town of Canadagua has a voluntary drop-off program also. They have about 240 participants, no cost to the residents. The residents receive a kitchen caddy, compostable bags and a larger six-gallon pail that they use to transport their scraps to the transfer station. And they dump their bucket there into larger toters. And then Impact Earth services the toters, about $15 to $20 cost per toter. And they have about two pickups a week. They also applied for a grant and participated in a backyard composting program with Cornell Cooperative Extension, just as an aside. And the town of Victor has a pilot bucket swap program also with Impact Earth. They have a staff shed at the DPW site in the village, although it's a town program. 150 customers in the town and village with transfer station permits participate. And they also have a pumpkin collection around Halloween where residents can drop off their pumpkins. And a backyard composting program with Cornell Cooperative Extension. And I mentioned that several of the Color Your Community Green teams are looking at trying to get municipal composting services. Fairport currently has, does their municipal buildings and has 25 to 30 residents dropping off at the market. And 10 for the village. The village brings the scrap to the wastewater treatment facility and composts it there. But they are also in discussions with Impact Earth on potential solutions that might be expanded for the town of Fairport, Village of Fairport. So when we think about a food scrap collection program, there are lots of different dimensions. It can be voluntary or mandatory. So voluntary obviously means that residents can opt in if they want to. It can be free or a fee-based, or it can be incentivized through something like a pay-as-you-throw program or some sort of way to lower your waste bills if you lower the amount, the frequency and the collection, size of your collection container.
Jackie, can I jump in real quick? I just have a question for you on that. Free or fee-based or incentivized for whom? For the municipality or for the resident who's a part of it?
For the resident. So the programs that I was talking about are all paid for by the towns. In some cases, the town turns around and charges a permit fee, like in the case of Canadagua, I believe it was. And in other cases, there's no charge back to the resident. So there is always for these particular programs where you're hiring a third-party vendor to come and collect. There is always a fee to the municipality. And you could decide whether or not you want to turn around and charge that to the, to the consumer, the resident. Now, there are certainly also options of a compost facility on municipal property. And in that case, you might also have some leeway there in terms of whether you want to charge, you know, how those costs get covered. So that's sort of maybe the last bullet, whether it's carried out by a private company. I guess I'll go back to this view. Private company, or it's done by the municipality, or you know, if it's a private public partnership. Other different variables are, you know, the size of the container, whether you give them a kitchen bin, whether you give them bag liners, the frequency of the pickup, the type of materials that is accepted, and whether there's a compost give-back program, or whether if it's done by the municipality as an operation, they sell that compost for a revenue. So those are all different dimensions of a food scrap collection program. And I think-
Jackie, may I interrupt? I have a question. If you do, if the municipality does do a composting program, does it require any permits from DOT for a site? Because it is in a way, it's sort of a landfill.
Yes, it would. At a municipal scale, you would probably fall under the permit 360 requirement. And you would need to follow that, the requirements for that type of facility.
And can you summarize what those might be?
Basically, you know, it has to do with the, the type of pavement that you have underneath the compost, the compost operation. You know, separations from any waterway or runoff potential. So there's just a slew of different requirements that you could go over with when you're doing your site planning. And then it would have to be an approved site plan.
Okay.
We have, we have looked at that. So this particular proposal, we thought was the simplest and easiest, kind of a first step. So that's what we're coming to you with, and that is using a third-party, this Impact Earth, to collect the compost. But if you're interested in looking at setting up your own compost facility, which I think in many ways, you're well positioned to do that. There are definitely grant opportunities for that. We put together a grant proposal for the town of Henrietta recently. And there is a local company that's very interested in pursuing partnerships where they would actually operate the facility. But we could talk about that. That's another option, I think, kind of down the line. So for this first option, again, you know, trying to come in with the simplest thing that we could do, just to sort of see, you know, the reception that it gets from residents, if it's something that they want. And kind of very easy to turn on the program was to suggest a program similar to the ones in Victor and Canadagua. Where we have a six-month pilot program for town and/or village residents. So again, we went to the town as well to push this program to them and get their feedback. It would be a drop-off or collection if there's enough density in the village. I think Robert could, from Impact Earth, could quote both of those options for you. And the idea would be that residents receive a bucket and they exchange their dirty bucket, their full bucket for a clean bucket at a drop-off site. Or it's picked up by Impact Earth at the resident's door and the bucket is exchanged. Potential drop-off sites would seem logical to be the Spiegel Center. There's currently a customer of Impact Earth collecting the food scraps from the senior program there. So it would be, you know, an expansion of that, probably building some sort of, you know, a gated area where the buckets could be dropped off and the clean bucket could be taken. Also, obviously, at the public market impact, when I say public market, I mean the Pittsburgh public market, the farmer's market. They're also at the Rochester Public Market. But this would be an expansion to the Pittsburgh market when it's open in season, that residents could drop off there. And sort of an entry into the whole idea of composting, and this would not require permit 360, would be to start composting at the Thornel Farms Community Garden, but that's a town discussion. The suggestion would be that the town can fund this. It's a pretty nominal cost to get started. I kind of, you know, mentioned it's probably looking at, you know, a couple of hundred dollars a year. And it could be funded through the Community Distributed Generation or Community Solar Sustainability Fund. The idea would be that residents purchase the bucket perhaps, and then the service is free. So this is all just potential. Obviously, we want the feedback from the village, the feedback from the town, and potentially feedback from residents on a proposal to go forward. Then we would evaluate the pilot project and, you know, see how many participants signed up, how, you know, whether it was utilized, the costs and the benefits. Any issues with it? Maybe have some listening sessions to obtain feedback before a broader rollout. Again, maybe work with emerging waste districts. I don't believe there's a waste district yet for the village, but we certainly could work with haulers to try and again, get some relief for residents in their waste bill. If they're able to get less service for their garbage. Once you take out anything that rots from the garbage, it really can sit a little bit longer. And obviously, if you're taking 30% out, you can wait a little bit longer as well. And then there are also opportunities for funding for even a program like this, a drop-off program through the DEC primarily, but some other funding sources like New York State Pollution Prevention Institute through the DEC. So maybe, before I go into the broader issue of food waste, I could stop, or I could just kind of put it in context. Maybe I should stop here. I don't know if Robert's on the line. Is Robert Putney here?
I don't see him yet.
Okay. So maybe now is the time to kind of get your feedback and any questions that you might have for me?
I think, I think it's optimal that the town and the village are looking at this at the same time. And I think there's an opportunity to collaborate and grow this together. Because it probably will lead to a more efficient operation and create less confusion among our residents if we're able to do that.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions? Board members? Nope, I guess go on.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, in many ways, the village with its density is really a logical place to start. Plus, you've got the Spiegel Center. So I just wanted to take you through a few seconds to just put the problem of food waste in context as well. This is something called the Food Recovery Hierarchy. It's a very similar model that the EPA uses in general for talking about waste as a waste hierarchy. So you can see down at the bottom of this pyramid is landfilling or incineration. So that's really the last resort. That's the worst thing you can do with food waste. As I mentioned, it creates methane when it's there. Composting is better because it doesn't create methane when it decomposes. So it has less of an impact on greenhouse gases. But really, if you can go, as you go further up the pyramid, those are more desirable and you can have a greater impact. So diverting food to animals or people obviously is better than throwing it away. Hopefully you can avoid people going hungry and the additional resources that it would take to grow additional food by wasting less. And right at the top of the pyramid is source reduction. So really reducing the volume of surplus food that saves the land that is required for it, the energy that goes into growing the food, the water that goes into growing the food. So all those resources get saved and that's really the top of the pyramid. So many of you might be surprised to know that food waste costs the average US family of four about $1,600 a month. And this is what that looks like.
Wow.
And at the same time, one in four Rochesterians is food insecure. And this was from 2019. Now, right now, I bet that number's even, even higher. As I mentioned, food waste is wasted resources. So we're wasting water, we're wasting energy that goes into growing it. We're wasting fertilizers and chemicals that go into cultivating it. And you'd be surprised to know that about 83% of food waste occurs at the consumer-facing level. So that's restaurants, cafeterias and homes, 43% in the home. So there's a big opportunity that consumers can have in preventing food waste. So when we look at the climate smart communities, I mentioned at the very bottom, PE5 is Residential Organic Waste Program. But there are actually one, two, three, four, five different elements in the climate smart communities actions for a total of 20, it's actually 43 points. I don't know. I wrote 27. I think it's like 40, 43 or 49 points. So you can see this first one, Organics Management Plan is two to 16 points. And then you have, you know, organic waste collection and composting in local buildings, waste reduction education, compost bins for residents and residential organic waste programs. So really, there are a lot of actions that municipalities can take around food waste. Writing an integrated organics waste management plan is one. You can have outreach and education programs around food waste prevention. You can have education around food rescue and food donation and enablers to get that food to people and animals. You can have backyard compost education, like the programs I mentioned in Canadagua and Geneva. And you can have the food scrap collection programs and build your own composting facility. So there are a lot, a lot of opportunity that I encourage you to think about as you're thinking about planning and next steps that you can take. I think this pilot is a great first step, but I would really encourage an integrated organics management plan. So the next steps I'd like to see would be- So the next steps I'd like to see would be to continue to, you know, think about this proposal for a village compost implementation and coordinate with the town to try and move forward on that, to roll out this pilot. And then to develop an integrated, comprehensive organics management plan that includes prevention, reuse, and recycling, and looks at a short-term and a long-term plan. So maybe, you know, the short-term plan is, is this Impact Earth drop-off site, and the long-term plan is a compost facility, for example. So with that, I feel like I dumped a lot on you guys, so pause again for any comments or questions.
My big question, Dan, my big question is, what would, what's it cost? I mean, it's terrific program, thank you. What does it cost?
Yeah, so that, as I said, the toters are about $15 to $20 each to, to pull off. So if we look at, you know, a couple of toters, it really depends on how many people participate. And, and Robert can certainly work up a couple of proposals for you if we want to look at that. But we're, we're talking about a couple of hundred dollars a year, you know, under $1,000, I think, to run the whole program. Certainly, the pilot would be only six months of that, right?
Go ahead, Lily.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lanfeer, I, I'm, I'm wondering if a first step might be for us to hold a public information like we did for the solar energy and for the green energy. And I know it's awkward with COVID, but we could organize a Zoom meeting, a virtual meeting, and introduce this concept. I think it's the education is the first step, and find out, gauge the interest level. I'm assuming it's going to be quite high. But I, I would like to gauge that first and maybe then support organizing a committee that would then present us the best options for our community. And this would be in conjunction with whatever the town is doing. So perhaps a citizens committee or similar could do the background work for us and present what they feel are the best options for the community.
I think, I think the model of the solar information meeting that's going to be rescheduled would be a good one, if we could even hold a joint session with the town, if the town also is interested in going forward. Other comments, questions?
Yes, I think this is, I think this is a very good program. I think it's an excellent program, and I strongly support it, trustee Galusha. And I think the village and our board of trustees should get behind a program like this. It's what we have to do.
Thank you.
And, and it also, as you pointed out, fulfills one of the recommendations from the Comprehensive Plan we adopted a year ago. So I agree. I agree with Frank's statement. Any other comments?
Yeah, Jackie, this is Dan again. Thank you for this. It's, it's really wonderful. I'm sorry to be so focused on money. Just know, and, and perhaps you can pass this on to Robert, who does such great work at the farmer's market in the summer. So we know Robert and are big fans of his. We're right in the middle of budgeting right now. So and, anything you can get us in terms of, even if they're back of the napkin numbers in a proposal, is helpful for us. So that if, you know, if we like the idea, we can quickly get it in the budget.
And how would you suggest that, that that come to you? Can, can Robert just send that in an email to somebody, or?
He could send it in an email to the village clerk, and then we'll incorporate it into our budget process.
Great.
Not promising anything, obviously. It's just easier at this time of year when the books are open.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
I think your suggestion of starting with a drop-off program at the Spiegel Center makes a lot of sense. I think the, the farmer's market is something that's very popular among residents in the village, because most of us can even walk there. And I think that's a great way to get this thing off the ground.
Good.
Jackie, I have a question. Is there an idea of moving up that pyramid, the upside-down pyramid, and eventually being able to give food to animals or people? It seems very complicated to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are model programs. I, I didn't go into all the details, but underneath each of the bullets, I put a little asterisk of New York State communities that are doing programs there that, that I, you know, can explain and tell about what they're doing. So we've got lots of different role models that we can look to. There's a really solid food waste prevention program, which is an education program, that I actually consulted with the city of Rochester on. They're going to be doing some work on rolling that out. But there are probably now about 30 or 40 communities that are doing something around food waste prevention. Connecting up with ways to donate to those in need and get it to animals is, is a matter of making connections, you know, with local farmers and, and food pantries, and that can be done as well. So certainly, I think if there's, if there's a plan in there, there, there is also opportunity for, for grants for all of these things as well. So I guess I'm just putting it out there. We can all think about these, you know. One of the ideas that the committee came up with is reaching out to the different restaurants and just making them aware of the opportunities for donation and, and diversion to animals. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, but probably a grant would be required, where maybe Color Your Community Green could help in some way with volunteer time, but I, I think it probably is worthy of some funding to get these programs going.
Well, the great thing about the food waste is, is that Robert is already well-established. He has, I don't know how many customers in, in the village of Pittsburgh, in the town of Pittsburgh, but, but he's a growing business. They just merged with community composting in the city. So I think that they'd be a great partner.
I agree.
Great, great, awesome. Thank you, Jackie. That's, that's very informative. We look forward to receiving your proposal, and let's hope this moves forward.
Great, thank you so much. I think I'll just mute myself and stay on for the next presentation as well.
Okay, please do.
Jackie, if you could just stop sharing your screen, that would be terrific.
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, our next presenter is Patty Love, who's going to give a presentation on permaculture. Patty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Rob. Dorothy, I wonder if you could allow me to share my screen, please?
There you go.
All right, thank you. I'll see if I can get this into the much more attractive slideshow, slideshow version. Well, thanks. I'm really excited to be here with Margot. The reason I'm before you tonight is because Margot invited me to work with her organization, Frog House, to do an educational webinar in March, and then a, an educational and hands-on workshop in May. And I guess the upshot is that we are hoping to do the May workshop on some village land as, as a demonstration project. So I'll tell you more about that. So a little bit about me. I have traditional degrees in business and masters in liberal studies. I worked in a career of, of working in higher ed and manufacturing and the financial industry. And then I kind of went back to my roots about 20 years ago and started homesteading. I grew up as a gardener, and my, my family did a lot of foraging and growing of our food. So I've been involved in some form of horticulture pretty much my whole life. And then a little over 10 years ago, I was finally able to study this thing called permaculture, which we'll talk about in just a minute, but really, it's just regenerative design. And so since then, I have been a consultant, a designer, a teacher of regenerative design for landowners, institutions, businesses, and various organizations. I also founded two not-for-profit programs, one of which was Lots of Food, where we planted perennial food forest gardens in the city of Rochester. I am a certified permaculture teacher and designer, and I'm also currently teaching permaculture at St. Lawrence University online. And I am the board treasurer for the Permaculture Association of the Northeast. I do want to, whenever I'm speaking, I like to acknowledge that I live on the traditional homelands of the Hudson Oshani people, now called Rochester, New York. Myself, I live in the place right now that's called West Brighton, and I'm just about a dozen miles down the canal path from, from the village of Pittsburgh. So I don't want to get too hung up on this term about permaculture, but I will tell you how I'm currently defining it, because it's, it seems like a foreign phrase to many people, and I don't want to be using jargon as I'm speaking. Permaculture is a holistic and interdisciplinary design approach. And this design approach, approach is based in and derived from the traditional land stewardship of the indigenous peoples, and also from looking at nature and seeing how nature does things. This design approach strives to repair and create regenerative and reciprocal systems for meeting human needs, while also, at the same time, trying to make the ecosystem better for all beings, plants, pollinators, insects, non-human animals, bungies, all of the, all of the beings. And some other terms that we can use that really mean the same thing are ecological design, regenerative design. It's a systems-thinking approach where we're trying to create closed-loop systems, and to use as few inputs as possible. We could also call it sustainable. But the idea is that we're creating these cycles of renewal. This practice is not only applied to how landscapes are designed, or how we manage our land spaces, and our, where the intersections of land and buildings and, and humans come together. The, the principles and ethics and practices of regenerative design can be used to design any system. The Village of Pittsburgh Board, for example, or the educational system in our area, or how, how the Village of Pittsburgh is organized, like a lot of city planners use regenerative design. So while we often talk about permaculture in, in relation to agriculture, agroecology practices, it really is so much more. It is systems design. But for what we're talking about for tonight, we'll just keep it really simple. And I just want to orient you to the place that we're talking about. So out behind the Department of Public Works on Village Lane, you may be very familiar with this, this gravel pit that's kind of at the center of the screen. So if that helps you orient where the space is, there's, the two brown lines are approximately where the paths are in that particular area. I know there are many, many other paths on the, in this land space. But just to, on either side, on the northeast and the southwest side of this path, are two areas where we could get started with this small project. And what is the small project? So what we're hoping to do in this space is to use these two, these two sites here to put on, on this side, to do a small demonstration project of a native food forest, and I'll show you some pictures in just a minute. And then on the other side of the path, Rob had indicated that there's an interest in starting a native tree nursery that's seed-grown. And this, I think, is a good spot where we could, could do that, start that in a small way. So there are really three components to what it is that, that we may do. And hopefully, to do this with the Village of Pittsburgh, is, one is the establishment of this demonstration food forest garden with signage. I'll show you some pictures in just a minute. The other is to put, get started with a native tree seed bed where we can grow out, for example, oaks or maples, hickories, other native trees. And then also possibly to start a small potted tree nursery that could be done, could be done as part of the same project. And those trees could be grown in pots and then planted out later on the space. I understand from some reading and conversations with Rob that really, there's a desire to turn this entire space into an arboretum. And I have many, many thoughts about how to do that. And I'm hoping that our work together on this small project will pave the way for a larger project of restoring this particular part of the village in a way where it has a thriving ecosystem of native plants. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. So again, what we're hoping to do is to do a, a March webinar that would be online, organized with Frog House. And then in May, on, I did not put the date on here, sorry. The date is May, Sunday, May 23rd, to hold an outdoor experiential workshop with all of the appropriate safety precautions in place and limited in size to establish this tiny food forest. And it would start out looking something much like this picture that you see here. This is an example of what I would call a perennial polyculture. Perennial meaning plants that live from 3 to 3,000 years. And a polyculture is just a collection of plants. If you look out in the forest, nature never plants just one tree. There's at least, you know, several trees and, and shrubs and, and flowering plants growing nearby. So that's really what a polyculture is. It's just a collection of plants. So this is an example of a polyculture that I helped create at Camp Eppworth down in the Hudson Valley. And so this particular one is not focused on native plants. I wasn't the, the workshop leader there, just a participant. So this picture is included to give you some expectation of what, what this demonstration garden would look like in the beginning for the first year or two, as things are getting established. I do want to focus on native plants, and I have researched a list of plants, and that's included in your packet that you were sent out ahead of time. We wouldn't be using all of those plants. It somewhat depends on the availability. I see that the Soil and Water Conservation District and the Saratoga Nursery DEC sale, they're already sold out on a variety of plants. So we'll see what they're, what's available. But basically, it would be a 25 by 12-foot space that would be fenced in something like this, but possibly also with deer tubes to protect the plants while they're getting established, protect them from being eaten by deer, being eaten by rabbits. And it would be a couple of hazelnut trees, maybe some wild bergamot and, and purple cone flowers. wild bergamot and, and purple cone flowers underneath, and some mountain mint and knotting wild onions. We might also put in some elderberries. There are a number of plants that we can put together, again, depending on what's available. So this would be the primary outcome. This tiny food forest demonstration space, it would be approximately 25 feet wide by 12 feet deep. And the deep, the depth is measured going in from the, the path. So this would be the outcome and of the workshop. And in addition, we would develop educational signage, either, you know, working with someone you want us to work with, or working with an Eagle Scout or some other group who wants to participate. And then, this is an example, this is not that same polyculture, because unfortunately I haven't been back to see what that grew out like. But this is an example over, you know, two or three or five years, that the plants all grow up and expand, and it becomes a lot more attractive than it starts out. It doesn't always start out really beautiful in the first year. With perennials, we say the first year they sleep, the second year they creep, the third year they leap. So in the third year, they really start to have kind of, you know, vigorous growth then. So it might look something more like this. It would be a very, very natural look. And we probably would end up taking down the fencing once things are established. And also, then we might just install some biodegradable tubes around the base of the tree to protect them from rabbits and, and voles and such. So this is another example of what it could look like. And this, this is actually about the size that the hazelnut trees would be, this, this tallest tree in the center here. So that gives you some idea of the size. So in a nutshell, that's what it is that we're looking to do, and hoping that we can get permission from you to, to work together in terms of the location. You know, obviously, we can do this workshop in some other spot, but we thought it would be a really great way to, to plant the seeds, pun intended, for the larger vision for this piece of land. And also, there's a lot of visibility there with a number of people who travel on foot. So that's another reason that it's particularly well-suited to, to this site. The only downside to this particular site is that watering is a little bit tricky, but we would use planting techniques such as mulching with woodchips that would reduce the amount of watering that would be required. And it'd be primarily the first month where, when it's getting established, that it would need to be watered. And we have a number of, of ways to handle that. So with that, I guess I'll leave to either Margo to add in more information. Margo, did you have other things you wanted to add?
Patty, I'd, I'd like to say something. We do have the capability to assist with watering easily during the growing season of the year. We regularly water the flowers and other landscaping that we have located throughout the village. We use tree gators for our, our younger street trees. And in times of drought, and when it's needed, we water them as well. So we could assist, certainly the Village DPW could assist with that. The other thing I'd like to say is that we've had problems with vandalism and kids partying in this area in the past. And I think by this sort of seed project that you've presented here tonight, we're demonstrating a vision of how this area could sustainably and incrementally be transformed over probably a number of years into what you described earlier, which would be a mature, hopefully northeastern ecosystem, mature plant community. But I think the educational value in, in, in both of the, the two sites that you described tonight is, is in line with a vision that we've discussed before in preserving this area as a public park and arboretum. And I think this is a very sensible way and a great way to take advantage of this site. An excellent presentation, by the way, also.
I would like to say something, actually, that it's ironic or interesting that these things, the two placements of the two gardens are right next to the gravel pit, which is like the most ugly part. And eventually, maybe over the summer, we can have a plan for people taking buckets of gravel. But, but in the meantime, the educational component is, is important. I've made some contact with the Eagle Scouts that I would like to, to follow through. And as Rob said, this is, this is a piece of land that could keep Eagle Scouts busy for the next 30, 50, 100 forever here. And, and also with the school, we have some contact. It's very awkward now with, with the COVID, but hopefully we can get, as the butterfly signs were made by an elementary school, I think it was.
Yes, it was, the Menon Center, a fourth-grade class.
And they might be interested in doing some of these. And also, speaking of Eagle Scouts or Scouts in general, there's a young man by the name of Jack Fantauso, I think it is. And he's making bat boxes, which is awesome, because like frogs, bat boxes are, are bats are very important in the ecology as, as controlling insects. So I think if that gets incorporated into that area as well, and maybe he would do a presentation later to the Village Board. But, but it's just a lot of fun to think about, about just starting in a small little place, like Jackie thought the village would be a great little microcosm. This is a microcosm of the whole area, which is a bigger microcosm of just preservation and what, along with, with the color bits for green and colored Penfield Green, they are advocating for a revolution in, for climate change, which is to, to start from our own backyards. So this project also could be, be a demonstration to people of how they could, they could replant native trees and, and plants and, and reduce their lawn space and generally reduce the waste and certainly, above all else, get rid of chemicals which contribute to, to climate change, but contribute to death and sickness and illness in all species. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Margo. So I have some questions for you. So can you walk me through there, there in your proposal, there are anticipated expenses, and there's a, there's a suggested donation. I just want to understand a little bit more about whether you're asking for the village to incur any of these expenses, whether these are for, and, and if so, how much are they? And then, or, or are these, is this just for informational purposes? It's a terrific program. I just want to understand what it might cost the village in terms of cash.
Yes, of course, and that is a very important question, always, always. So what we're asking in, in, in addition to permission to do this demonstration project on the site, we're also hoping that the village would be able to help provide woodchips for us to use for mulch, and maybe help us in collecting some of the corrugated cardboard that we would use as a weed barrier to, in the site, and the watering assistance that Rob mentioned, that would be really fabulous. Outside of that, I don't think that we require any funding from the village. Certainly, if there are funds for the village to, to contribute, that's always welcome. But we are planning, Margo's team is applying for, I can't remember the name of the grant, but there's like an Earth Day $750 grant. And we're planning to charge workshop participants to, to participate, and that should fund the project.
Okay, I see this, I see this very similar to 25 years ago. The village partnered with the Cornhill Navigation Company. And that was really at the time when the rediscovery of the Erie Canal was just starting. And their mission has been, was and continues to be to highlight the history and understanding and the potential value of the Erie Canal as a historical and recreational resource. This is very similar in some ways, partnering with a Frog House to, number one, highlight the ecological value of the property that we protected in July, and also to move forward a mission to increase the public's understanding of the native ecosystem in which we all live and are dependent upon. So I think it's, it's a fantastic seed project to get work underway on the new village arboretum.
Agreed. So I, I had one follow-up question. I, I wasn't done, I'm sorry. So given that you, you will make a request for some village resources, Bob, I'm asking that you disclose your involvement with the Frog House. You're listed on their website as an advisor. And so, given that, I, I think should get that on the record.
Yeah, that's true.
So can, can you talk about what your involvement is with this group, since this group is asking for village resources?
Well, I've, I've had an informal relationship with, with a Frog House since it was founded. I volunteered at some of the educational events they've had on State Street. And, and that's, that's really about it. I have no vested financial interest of any sort in Frog House, and by that very criteria, I do not have a conflict of interest. My only interest is really in preserving this area, something that I've advocated for 20 years. And it's, it's certainly gratifying to see that the pieces are now finally coming together.
So as an advisor, as you know, the mayor is a geek. And so I, I probably would not have been able to do very much without getting his, his thoughts and ideas and vision for the village. And so since my purpose is to support the village in any way that I can, I will do that. As far as financial interest, he has not given me one single penny. And I don't, I don't ask him to either. But we also have the possibility of getting a grant from, from Say the Frogs, of which I'm a member, and have been for about 10 years. I've been a long time associated with that. And there's some other grants that we're looking at, so as, it's, it's not going to be.
As, as a private, you know, as, as a private municipal partnership, you know, this is an opportunity to make things happen that we may not have the time or the funds to do. And I think it's very similar to, to projects that we've undertaken in the past in partnership with Historic Pittsford, and, and with, as I mentioned before, Cornhill Navigation. I think the, the, the key thing is our, our mission here is aligned. The village's mission is to make our property available for the public's use and enjoyment and interpretation. And I think the Frog House's mission is to increase educational opportunity, specifically to younger members of our community. So I don't think there's a conflict. I think it's by collaborating together, as we do with the town of Pittsford and other agencies, we can actually have, achieve a greater project together than we could individually alone.
Jackie may know what, what points might be available for the Climate Smart Community from a project like this, do you, Jackie?
I, I, I think there's definitely some overlap in, in a couple of the different, you know, regenerative agriculture, urban landscaping sort of elements. I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many points, but there's definitely, you know, some area that can be explored there too, as far as climate smart communities goes.
And then Lily had said earlier that maybe should be put out to the residents. Is this just to hold the, the workshops? Would that need approval or some sort of assessment?
I could answer that, Margo. It would require, the, the project would require a non-municipal use permit as we grant to the Cornhill Navigation for their use of our dock and shame place. So that would, to move forward, because it would, we would be granting a Frog House permission to develop these on village property. And that would require just, there's no fee, but there would be a non-municipal use permit.
And for those other permits, I had to also have my million-dollar insurance for doing something on State Street. Does the village insurance cover this project?
That would be up to the Village Board, and that would be something the Village Board would have to discuss and consider.
Okay.
I think one other thing that's somewhat important is that we have planned to do the webinar in March and the workshop in May. So the, the webinar can go on, whether or not the, the May project happens, but we are linking them together. And so there's, you know, a little bit of time sensitivity here in terms of getting approval or not, because, you know, if, if we're not able to do this here, then we would, you know, try to do it some other place, but.
We, we have another regular meeting in two weeks, and potentially we could put an official request on the agenda for that meeting. That meeting is scheduled for the second Tuesday in the month of February.
Oh, what I would like to know is that our advertising and our annual calendar is going out. Now, if the Village Board should say nay on this, I could simply say that the event was canceled. But, but is it in poor form for me to, to say that this is what we're planning?
Well, I guess what I would ask is some input from the other board members to, to let us know, you know, give us a barometer of how each of you feel about the, the proposed project.
It's great. So I'll, I'll go first. I think it's great. I, I do have, I, I don't, we, we don't have any money, so it's, it's very hard to, to think about whether we could donate anything. So, you, you know, in terms of your question about insurance, we would certainly have to talk about that. But I, I would lean no on that, that that would be provided by, by you guys. We, we certainly don't pay for insurance on private groups that want to do something in the village. That's usually something, but I, I don't know, we'd have to talk about that as trustees. So as long as, you know, money isn't, isn't budgeted for this kind of thing. But also, we'd have to understand a little bit more about what kind of village resources you guys would require and, and what that would, what our opportunity costs of that would be, and that kind of thing. But it's a terrific program, so thank you.
Yes, well, you wouldn't have to pay a thing, Dan, and Village Board members and, and representatives. Even the mulch, you know, we're asking for donation of mulch. But if you, and woodchips, but if you don't have it or cord, cardboard, then we'll find other means of getting it.
I, I think for the nominal, I think there's probably no real cost was by giving you labor for watering, for example. I think with woodchips or mulch, we can get free mulch from the town. However, my experience in having had used free mulch from the town is often is as full of invasive species that we don't really want to spread. So.
Emochos.
And, and that as well. And so perhaps, you know, I think I, we would be willing to consider, because mulch is not very expensive. We have a wagon and we have crews that we could move it for you. That would be an incremental cost that if you had, could give us a quantity of how much might be needed, that would be something I would be willing to propose to the board that, that the village could cover. I don't think it's a significant expense, so I think it is something that certainly we could afford, and we'd have the forces to assist with that. I think that's a reasonable request. But I would still ask now to get input from the rest of the board, so Margo and Patty can get some sense of, of where we, how much support there is for this project to go forward.
Trustee Galusha, Bob, I'm in favor of this project and
Trustee Galusha, Bob, I'm in favor of this project and I support what you just said. I think it's a worthwhile project. And the cost to the village is going to be minimal, something that we could support, I would believe. I would support this program.
Thank you, Frank. Renee?
I support it as well. I, I'm glad we talked through some of the, the costs and we're clear going in. So we understand what would be expected if there were some, some nominal costs, but this sounds like a great, a great thing. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks Renee. Lily?
Yes, and I would, I, I do support it and I am also happy to receive the name of the scouts. I've been waiting to hear from the, from the Eagle Scouts about their potential project. I had one, two young men come to me, but I haven't seen any results of their interest. So I'm hoping that this young person who was building or has an interest in building the bat houses will contact me. I'd be happy to work with him. So we can absolutely get that portion completed, irrespective of anything else that happens with the village's involvement. But I'm also, I'm wondering if you were, are looking to the trustees for any input regarding your program, webinar program in March, whether that's an independent action on your part? That you're, you're holding a webinar and you're just letting us know about it. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, everything is always fluid in my mind and to the aggravation of many people who work with me. But, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm always interested in input and, and I, I just love it. I mean, Jackie has been fabulous because she immediately sent me that grant information and, you know, she's provided me with various information and people from Color Pencil Green have been very helpful. So about the Eagle Scouts, this Jack, I, I said that we might have other projects and might want some volunteers. And he said, well, I'll take care of that. Just tell me what you want. So I said, should we talk to the Eagle Scout Director? And he said, no, I'll take care of it. But I will have him get in touch with you Lily for whatever you want Eagle Scouts to do. And, and I, his, he had a very short presentation about the bat boxes. And four or five of us looked at it and, and I'm sure he'd be delighted to talk to the board.
And to answer the question about, and to answer the question about the March webinar, we would be doing that independent of the village. But because during that webinar, we are going to in particular, talk about this project on this site, assuming it gets approved. That's where the two get tied together.
Okay, thank you.
And while the trustees might be interested in joining it.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Great. That is wonderful. Patty, that's a, thank you for an excellent presentation and we look forward to seeing an official request for a non municipal use permit.
You have another, another person.
Steve has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Steve, go ahead.
The thing I was asking, I, I'm not quite familiar with that location on a trail, but I was just curious because the brand new trail was just created. If there would be a place along that, that this might work well. Because it's going to be more visible and it's going to be a little less prone to vandalism because it is a more open and, and nicer area. So it might be more, you know, I mean, people would see it more if it was on the, the wider newer trail versus I, I think where your, your habit is on like a back trail versus that main one, isn't it?
Um, yes. So if, if the main trail is, is the main trail that you're referring to this, this path here that I'm tracing with a cursor right now?
The main trail is over on the town's property where those ponds are over in the upper left corner of the aerial photograph. I, I think, I think, you know, we sort of walked the site, Steve, and what I would say is even these minor trails now are getting a lot of use because the new trail has brought a lot more people through here. So I think my hope is, is to keep publicizing the fact that we have trails here to scare the, the vandalizers out of there. And I think this, having this garden in this location is optimal because it's one of the few sites in the area that gets lots of sun throughout the day. And Patty, who's the environmental expert here, looked at other places that I suggested, which, which quite frankly were terrible. And she selected this, I think in part because it gets a lot of sun. It really is kind of a metal. And I think it will actually draw people into that area.
Okay.
Also, rather than scaring the vandalizers away, why don't we recruit them to help maintain it and guard it and water it?
That's right. Do some gardening work. That's a great idea. All right. I guess that's it for all tonight. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Margot. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
With that, with that said, I think, is Casey still on here? We were going to have a brief discussion on the special permit amendment for lock 32. Casey, are you, are you on, are you online?
Yes, Bob, I am. I'm here.
Okay. Good, good to have you here. Jeff, do you want to give a little update where we are?
Bob? For, for clarification, it's a, it's an application for a new special permit, no longer for an amendment.
Yes, I talked to Jeff this afternoon.
Yeah. And the reason for that is.
Explain the reason for that.
Yeah. The reason for that is the old one is a preexisting nonconforming. It's under the old zoning code and it just makes sense to have the code or the, the permit match up with the current code. It was done under a completely different set of how we got microbreweries in here. So it'd be good to have a current permit under the current code. If the board should choose not to grant the new permit, lock 32 is still permitted operate under the old permit. I just think it's a lot cleaner that way.
That, that makes sense. And my understanding is we have to wait till we change the new code until we can grant the special permit. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, but that the timing of this thing is it could be simultaneous. You, you have a public hearing set for the new code. You could set a public hearing for granting the special permit on the same, same evening. And they could happen sequentially.
Okay. Comments and questions from the board?
My concern, Mayor, and this is trustee Galusha, is that that space continue to be, to be unrestricted for the public. I'm very concerned that, that, that the public has access to that space. And that perhaps there should be signage that would indicate that that is a public space.
And in other words, I think what you mean Frank is fulfilling the original spirit of the purpose of creating that plaza there because it is a great amenity on the waterfront. And the more that it's open and accessible to everyone every time of day, the better it is for everybody on Shane Place and, and for our residents that use and appreciate that area. Is that right?
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. Other comments?
Trustee Lanfear? Am I recognized?
Lily, you have the floor. Yes, yes, you are.
Yes. Yes. My question would be spinning off of what Frank has pointed out and what you have pointed out about public access. Given that this will be subject to state liquor authority, I would like to see when the application is made to the trustees, that it be spelled out how this will be accommodated as far as allowing the public access as well as accommodating state liquor authority, which I do believe requires some sort of a barrier between public right of way and where you are actually serving or consuming alcohol beverages. So I, I'm just, I would ask the applicant to show the trustees how that will be accomplished. So that the reservations or the questions or concerns regarding the continued public access will be answered and satisfied. So that we would be able to move on.
I'm sorry, Lily. Can I ask a follow up question to you and Frank? Can you guys go a little deeper on this? Cause I don't quite understand this. So this to me was a parking lot, which isn't really a public space. And so.
Okay. Maybe that's where the difference is.
Well, so, so here, hold on, let me finish this thought. Let me finish my question. So this was a, a parking lot. And then now they're going to put up a pavilion that a business could use or, or it'll be there, you know, presumably forever. I, I don't understand why and we know that its first use is, is as a, as a place to serve alcohol, which is not open to anybody under 21. I don't understand what this public component is.
Okay. I think there's a part that's missing. There's a part that's missing, Bob. And that is that after, yes, indeed, back in the day, I want to go before 1970 something, it was a parking lot. Subsequently, it was encompassed as part of the public space, which was created along the canal with grant money. And so that patio was created for public use. And you'll notice the pavers are the same. It was built by the DPW with grant money at the same time that, that pathway, that linear park was created. So that is, and the public has enjoyed and used that space since that time. So that is what we mean by public access. The other part is that we have to separate, at least I have separated and I, I believe this is, this is correct. Two, two different things are happening. One is a property owner is making an application for a pavilion. That is one thing that's happening. The second thing that's happening is that a business owner is requesting an expansion of their special use permit. Two separate, they're two separate things. The pavilion, we don't have any, we don't have any say in that as trustees. That's Planning and Zoning Board and Architecture Review. So we're not talking about the pavilion, strictly speaking, we're not. We're talking about the expansion of an existing special use permit. And so as part of that permit, I, the question is being asked, and I, I think this is what Frank was asking, is that how it will the public be permitted to continue to access or use that public space? How will that, because we've been assured by the property owner that that is, that was the intent. That her intent is that all of her tenants will have access to her new pavilion that she's placing on this piece of property. And that's the question.
There's a piece I don't get.
Before you speak, let, let me add a technical piece here.
My question is around, isn't this on, on private property? I don't understand the public space.
Dan, let me answer that. Let me answer that question. When, when the plaza was originally put in, the landscape architect ER designed it for, to occupy the whole area between the Aladdin's building and the building that now houses lock 32. At the time, because of the concern over loss of parking, we ended up doing a compromise where the, the land that is part of the Collins property, it remained parking lot. The parking lot was reconfigured. It used to extend onto Canal Corporation land. The Canal Corporation land was then still remained plaza, a new plaza that we constructed as well as a little landscaping barrier where there were two trees that have, one, one is gone, the other one is dead and it's going to come out as part of this plan. But there is a public interest in that area because it, it always has been a public space. The paving was paid for by the public. There's also a walkway between Aladdin's or lock 32 and the proposed plaza area that connects to a crosswalk that goes over to the coal tower. That's an important access way that was also paved with village funds. That will be maintained as part of this project. But I think there's, there's a good compromise. Again, I would describe this whole thing as a private partner, partnership, because I think the public use is something that is both good for lock 32 and for the village. But I think Lily brings up a legitimate point. When we spent the money and, and applied and received the grant from New York State for the original plaza, it was a greater public purpose that we want to preserve as this whole thing moves forward. I think the design that's being proposed actually does that. And I think it's also quite feasible to have, you know, a barrier. So there's a defined area where people can drink beverages during the times that lock 32 is open, but that could easily be removed other times. So the plaza people can freely move through it, sit there, whatever. That's sort of the way it operated this summer. And I think everybody agrees that the operation of the plaza this summer was a great success. And really added another dimension of activity into that area, especially during this COVID season.
Exactly. And what I was trying, what I was trying to convey to the applicant for this extension of the special use permit, that I, it's one trustee, would like to see how he will accommodate that concern and that, that requirement by the state liquor authority, that this be a confined area. I would just like to see how he will address this to also address the concern about the public.
Casey's got his hand up. I'm going to give him the floor. Casey, you've got the floor. You're muted though.
Hello. So Jenny, Jenny couldn't come. So you guys are right in that there's two separate applications. So I can't necessarily speak to the overall use of the pavilion because it's not my application. It's Jen's project. Unfortunately, she shouldn't be, or she couldn't be on the call. However, I will say our, our plan of operation, from the way that I understand it, again, not speaking for her necessarily, is that it's going to operate much in the same way. There's, there's not going to be locked gates. There, there does need to be a rope type barrier. It does not mean that there can't be openings for pass through traffic, just like it is now. The liquor authority has already approved this. It's what we needed to do in order to use it temporarily through the summer. So there, there's no additional paperwork that needs to be done with them as long as there is a form of barrier like a rope that just basically outlines the property that shows where alcohol can be consumed is all they're looking for. It's not meant to hold people back or prevent people from coming in necessarily. It doesn't mean that it needs to be closed off at certain hours or anything like that. It can, it can still look in the way that it does now, which is welcoming to the public. I don't, I don't know about signage. And again, Jenny could probably speak in greater detail when we meet with her about the actual pavilion, but I, my assumption is from an insurance standpoint, it's probably a bit tricky to have private insurance on property that's advertising for public use. My assumption is that that's probably would hinder some sort of signage. But in the same sense, on, on the other side, we, I can speak for lock 32. When we were there, we had people get coffee there in the morning. We have purchased all of the feeding to this point ourselves. And we encourage public use. We're, we're not open all the time and, and we like when people are enjoying the, the space before we're open and even when we're open. You never know who could be waiting for food from one of the other Collins property restaurants. So our staff is trained to welcome people and they don't push people away. It's, it's a community space that, that, you know, we, we enjoy that aspect of it. But again, I don't want to speak for Jenny, but that's just my, my two cents coming from lock 32.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. That you answered the question that I had asked. And that is that we wanted, at least I would like to be, have a plan that you can present to us as how that will be accommodated. And I think you are answering that.
Yeah. And, and I think that's our hope. I, I think you just described what our hope is for the plaza, Casey. And clearly, you know, if it's even, you know, one and a half times as successful as it was this year, we'll be doing something really great for shame place and for the village. Okay. Any, any other comments? Steve, I'm sorry. You've had your hand up for a while.
Yeah. I did want to mention, because I talked to Jenny extensively about this and Casey, there are two things I want to mention. Dan said something about that, that the use was for the alcohol consumption, but that's not the whole idea. The primary idea of Jenny was to, to fulfill her dad's wishes. Back in 1994, there was a plan put in action that never got fulfilled, that that space was supposed to be a shared public venue. It was all laid out. Whatever reason that plan never came to fruition, but that was Ted Collins' vision was to create. was to create a shared public space during any of the nice weather. And then it would be, there would be some parking there when it was inclement. Um, and the other thing I, because I've talked to the liquor authority and did research too, the only thing that's required is to delineate the area. Not secure it, but just delineate it to show the, the use area. So, you know, that's two things I want to make sure we understand. Alls he has to do is delineate that area that will be utilized, that will be a shared utilized area, but it will not be closed in any way to the, to anybody else's access. There will be access Aladdin's to simply craves to the coal tower to Jemba tat, to the gentleman who have coffee down there every morning. Um, that, that was the vision of Ted Collins's, and that's why Jennifer is going out on a limb along with the other business people to fulfill that dream.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Thanks for the clarification. So then my question is a process one. You guys mentioned you wanted to see some detail from Casey on, and from Jennifer on the public access portion of this. He did just address it verbally. And I'm looking at an application for a special permit. So are you asking for an amendment to that special permit?
Jeff, I think you should answer that because you, you, you addressed this earlier. Yes.
No, no, no.
That's Dan's question.
Yeah, that's not my question. Um, you guys just asked Casey.
I have a thought.
Well, yeah.
You guys, you mean Lilly and Frank? Are they asking for additional information that's not already provided in the application?
Right. So does he need to, what, what does he need to do to get you that additional information beyond what he just said?
Um, I would ask Jeff to, to, to clarify that. Sometimes when there is a special use permit, there are conditions that are, and so I, I would think that we, we might want to add language around the understanding that the, that a public access will be maintained, for instance. Jeff, if that's not fair or not.
That was going to be my suggestion that the board know, now knows what Casey plans. And those, that could be incorporated in any special permit that the board grants.
I think it's a simple matter of Casey just saying how he wants to delineate the space. As, as you said before, Casey, you know, it doesn't have to be secured. It just has to be delineated and that could be included in the application.
Yeah, I think it's important also that, um, I'm sorry, but I think it's important also that, that Jenny is the one that's laying all this out. Uh, my understanding is my use is to use the property as she has approved to lay it out. So although I certainly do have a, a, an ear to say, I would like it to look this way, but it's ultimately her project. Um, but I, I, again, speaking for her in, in her absence, I know that the way it's laid out now is the way that her vision is and the way that the drawings are drawn, where you can still have true traffic and so on and so forth.
So, so my thought is that we now know what everybody wants. I think Ms. Collins has told us before what she wants. She can change that if she needs to. But once you know what all is going on, then in the special permit approval, you merely indicate that it's not exclusive and the means by which Casey's going to achieve that. And that's what he just described.
Okay.
Yep.
So he doesn't have to change anything in writing. We can just, just, we can just make it conditional in the special permit?
In my judgment, that would be acceptable if it's acceptable to the board.
What you're saying is no written conditions, Jeff?
No, no.
No, Jeff is saying there are written conditions, Lilly. We can specify or Casey or Jennifer can specify. I think we, it's easy to document what the method is going to be to delineate the area where alcohol will be served.
Right. So it's, it's a matter of, for instance, hours of operation, uh, delineation and, you know, that's just one of the, one of the criteria.
Yeah, my comment was specifically.
We have done many times before. If the information is not in the application, we can ask for it and set it as a condition. That's right.
Right.
Okay.
My comment was specifically to the point that I don't think we need a formal written addendum to the application.
Agreed. Thank you.
I agree as well.
But it's a condition that could be placed once, when we're hearing it.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want.
Recognizing Steve.
Yeah, the, um, the application, the new application that came in references all of the requirements or the original application for lock 32. So what it's doing is taking all the conditions, hours and all that. If, you know, you guys can put other stipulations.
Okay.
Whatever you granted them on the original application, all those factors are still rolled into this one. Plus whatever you want to add is a condition for the new permit.
Got it. Thank you.
Great.
Okay. I hope that's clear and I hope that's clear to Casey. Does that sound? I know it's been confusing.
No, no, it's not confusing at all. No, it, it makes sense. Um, I.
I think we're on the same page.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Um, so do we need a motion to go to public? We've set a public hearing, right?
No, we have not. We need to set a public hearing.
All right. Uh, what's the date that we would be looking at, Dorothea?
I would suggest it, well, we're looking to do it in conjunction with the other local laws. I would say February 16th and the other ones are set for seven. I think this needs to come after, if I understand Jeff correctly. So I'd say set it for 7:15. Does that work?
I will make a motion to propose a public hearing to, um, consider a new special permit for lock 32 to use the outdoor Plaza as a serving space for February 16th. That, what time did you say? 8:00 PM?
7:15.
7:15.
Um, what? May I, point of order?
Yes.
Uh, Dorothea, don't we, um, do we have to organize them according to, um, or what I'm trying to say is that wait, first we have to hear the code change. And that has to happen first, and we have to vote on that first.
Right.
Before we can move on to.
Put it at 7:15. She put it after.
Yep.
The other three local laws are at seven o'clock. So you're going to address.
Okay, seven o'clock. Thank you for the clarification.
And then we'll address this.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, I have another point of order. Your, your motion, your motion is only an extension. So what you want to do is have to, uh, the public hearing will, will be with regard to the special permit application for lock 32.
That's what I said, Jeff.
Oh, you said the extension.
Oh, I thought I said a new special permit for lock 32.
Right. You added the extension to the, so it's the whole thing.
Oh, okay. All right. I, I stand corrected. Yes. Uh, Steve, you had your hand up.
No, I, I was after the same point as Jeff, that it's for a whole new application, not just for the new space.
And, and my intent, my intent was to make it for a brand new application for lock 32. And now we need a second. Would someone second my motion?
I'll second your motion.
I think Renee beat you to it, Frank.
Sorry, Frank.
That's good.
I'm really sorry.
All right. Okay, either way. Uh, Dorothea, could we have a vote, please?
We can. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion, motion passes.
Thank you, Casey. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thanks, guys.
You too.
You too. Hey, Brooklyn and Marina, we're on agenda item number three. We're almost two hours into this thing. I was not lying about this.
I didn't know they had to stay for the whole thing. Earlier I was like, no, I think they're just coming to introduce themselves. I'm really sorry.
Getting a feel for it. They're being good.
I would really like them to come and stay.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm saying we should ease them in gently, not.
I mean, like long term. So I can leave.
They were warned.
They were.
To Jeff, and I don't think Jeff has anything to report, so I'm going to circle back to Mary and the treasurer's report. I did, uh, review the vouchers earlier today.
Okay. Hold on, let me go grab it. Okay, vouchers for approval. Um, most vouchers are ordinary expenses. The only one I would like to call up for you is voucher for 10 from Scott Harder for the purpose of Rand Creek Gabians in St. Louis Panding. Other than that, all ordinary.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to pay the vouchers? I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Lampier, second.
Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion, motion passes.
Thank you. Um, the next item are the attorney bills that I have outstanding for $21,000. I have not received any messages to say that any of these may or may not go forward. Um,
I did.
I guess I'm going to defer to you.
Yeah. So you haven't seen that yet. So, um, I did get some this afternoon. Um, so, uh, it, it's a little tricky. So, so bear with me. Two of them got approval from, uh, Susan Loda and are ready for trustee review. And those are numbers. So, let's see, I sent them, hold on one minute. Just want to make sure I have the numbers right for you. Uh, those are numbers, and I sent all this an email. Um, 1017, 1017 and 1008. Those are fully approved by Susan. So now the trustees can review those. And then let's do those two first, and then I'll get to the more complicated ones, because those two are the easy ones.
Okay. 1017, Dan, did you say 1017 and 1008?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the two that Susan approved, and I have reviewed them. And so, uh, 1008 is for 28550 and 1017 is for 174450. So I'll make a motion to approve those.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Trustee Lampier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, um, those are the two that were non-complicated. The other two, 1006 and 958, I got partial approvals on. What I didn't get is detail. I, I think she was basically saying that some of it is in Susan's purview and some of it isn't. And so I think she wants, I think she wants Justin to approve part of it and her to approve part of it. So I, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to approve the payment of part of the invoice. I think I should now go to Justin and get approval on the rest. Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah, we could hold off to the budget meeting or something, Dan. I think that's fine.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Then we'll wait on.
And that leaves, uh, Jeff's bill, municipal bill for the 16,000. Is that one good to go forward for payment?
Um.
That is one that the board of trustee uses.
Yes. So hold, hold on one moment. I have to pull up my notes on that one. So that is, I, I just need that number again. It's, uh, 58415?
Correct. For $16,000.
Box, there it is. Hold on one minute. There was a, it knows the 1627958. It's that one?
That is correct.
Okay, hold on. I just had to double check the math really quickly. It's all. This, sorry, guys, this is a big one. Uh, I'll need about 90 seconds more on this one. Okay, so 128.6. 1613958. Plus 20458.
Excuse me for one second. I'll be right back.
I got different numbers. Oh, wait. No, 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 no. Minus 627958. Yeah, the math checks out. So, um, I will submit this to approve for the trustees.
And I'll make a motion to approve the Zaglin group invoice number 1006.
Sorry, sorry.
We are an Osborne Reed.
No, no, I'm sorry. The Osborne Reed and Burke invoice number 58414 for 16,000 to 7958. Can I make that motion to approve that invoice?
I'm going to amend that. You had the invoice number wrong there, Frank. It's 58415.
No, I thought that's what I said. That's okay. 58415 is right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, roll call. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Bob, this is motion to approve the Osborne Reed Burke bill. Mayor Corby.
Corby, Corby, aye.
Mayor, uh, motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I will bring the other two Zaglin invoices up for payment next meeting. Thank you. That's it for me for tonight.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
We is setting a public hearing, uh, to override the tax cap. Again, I would repeat, we do this every year regardless of whether we plan to override the tax cap or not, as recommended by the New York Conference of Mayor's staff. Um, and tonight we're just going to set the public hearing. Um, I guess this would again be probably on, uh, February 16th. Is that correct, Dorothea?
Nope. We're going to do that February. Nope. February 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will make a motion to hold a public hearing to consider, um, setting a local law allowing override of the tax cap on February 23rd of 2021. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Trustee Galusha.
Sorry, Frank. Renee got you, Frank. Give it to Frank.
Dorothea, would you, would you call a vote?
Did I get to you again first?
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier. Lilly, you're, you're muted.
You're muted.
Lampier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Bob, can I jump in real quick? Cause you kind of skipped.
You sure can.
I just need to get approval from the board for HSA funding for our two new employees for Marina and Brooklyn and amount of 1250. So if I can have that approval.
Remove. Do I have a second?
Renee.
Stetser, second.
Thank you.
Trustee.
Dorothea, would you call a vote?
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next item we have is Renee is going to be. Five mile per hour speed limit. Renee, you have the floor.
All right. So the bill in the assembly has been introduced. Um, it was last time as well, so that's not new. We're still waiting for the bill number. I, I spoke with her chief of staff on Friday and we still don't have a, a bill number. Um, Senator Brooks legislative assistant said, uh, they introduced the bill last Friday and I just checked before, um, the meeting tonight and the bill number has been assigned, uh, S02959. So, uh, the Senate looks like they're a little ahead of the game. So hopefully the assembly bill will have a number by the time we meet, because I don't think it makes sense to do the home resolution until we have both. Cause we don't, I think it's. So, um, hopefully by our budget meeting, um, I can add it to that agenda, and, um, we can adopt the home rule resolution that night. And I, since the language of the bills are exactly the same as last year, I was just gonna use the resolution from last year and edit the bill number, so we don't need to involve Jeff's, uh, Jeff's time. Is that okay to do?
I think it's fine. Jeff, do you have any objection to that?
If that was a question for me, it sounds right.
Okay, I just didn't wanna, we don't need your assistance if we can just, and, uh, there's nothing.
I looked at them last time, so they should be okay.
Okay, so I'll do that, and I'll prepare them, um, cuz I can't, I can't imagine that we wouldn't have the bill number by, by our budget meeting, but who knows?
So, Renee, if you wanna, if Renee, if you wanna get me those numbers, when you get them, I can go ahead and get the, I have the resolution, everything, I can get it all set.
Okay, great. We, I, I will send you the Senate number, um, but we don't have the assembly yet.
Okay.
Uh, um, can you add it to that? Is it okay to add it to the budget meeting? It'll take like two seconds to do. I don't wanna make it longer than, than we need to.
I, I think it's fine. It, it'll be quick, Renee. I don't think it's a big burden.
Okay, great.
We'll make it happen.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to member items, um, we have, the new code, uh, caused problems for the approval of holiday hots. We had taken out our transient merchant code because it had problems in the way it was previously written. Uh, Jeff Turner has done a draft of a new short-term retail business code, so I'm gonna let Jeff just describe briefly, uh, what's embodied in this. This is just distributed tonight. It's not aged. This is just for your review, and we will discuss it at our next regular meeting.
Well, basically, you just, yeah, basically, it, the, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals has expressed difficulty in applying the, um, temporary zoning permit for these kind of uses, so Steve and I put our heads together, and, and notwithstanding that obstacle, um, we came up with a, sort of a transition from the transient merchant code that used to be on the books to a short-term retail business code which has a, a lot of the protections that the temporary use permit has in it. So, it'd just be a board of trustee function. Um, I wanted to do that to keep it outside of the zoning code. So we, I know we were planning a, an amendment to the zoning code, but I didn't wanna keep doing that, so that's how we settled on this mechanism.
Okay. That sounds great.
Everybody okay with that? All right?
Yeah.
All right, then I'm gonna, um, Renee had a member item on the bike share. Renee, you have the floor again.
Wow, it's like the Renee Show. Um, I sent you all the draft agreement for Hopper that had my questions and concerns and red font and, um, asked you all to give me feedback, and the town attorney is reviewing it for the town, so hopefully I'll have the feedback for Hopper shortly. Jeff reviewed it for us and provided a memo. Um, Jeff, can I send that memo directly to the team at Hopper so they can make changes, or how do you wanna, how do you wanna handle that?
That, that's, that's the board's call. I sent this to the board.
I didn't know. Uh, oh, sorry. I didn't know if you put it, if that was a format for us, or if we, if we could, if we decide to, just send that directly to them.
It's a format for anybody. I mean, I'm not, you know, whoever, whoever the board wants to have, have it, can have it.
Okay, all right. Does anyone, did anyone else have, um, some concerns, and do we wanna go over Jeff's, um, Jeff's memo, or how do you want me to handle the feedback for, for Hopper on the agreement itself?
I haven't had a chance to review that, I'm sorry, Renee. Uh, do you have a timeline that you're working toward?
Well, we're trying to get the permits. I would say, I am, if you could give, probably by the end of, um, the week, if you could just look over the agreement, but you're probably gonna wanna look over what Jeff sent as well. Um, and if you agree with what Jeff and I have already, um, kinda looked at, then you don't probably need to send me your feedback, but if there's something that's not.
Looked, looked at it, Renee, and I'm comfortable with it, so I'm, I'm signing off.
Okay, for, on, on what Jeff, um?
On Jeff's memo.
Okay, yeah, Dan, you're talking about Jeff's memo, not the, not the agreement, right?
Correct, right.
Okay, yeah, no, I think he just sent it over today so that we could talk it over, um, tonight, so, um, I don't know, what's a realistic timeframe? How much time do you need? You tell me.
Day.
A day? Okay, how about we say by Friday?
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah, so I think, though, that there are a couple issues the board needs to discuss as a board. And the first is whether or not we're, we're getting a, a municipal benefit out of this that would justify the use of municipal space so that it's not a gift. And, and that's really something that, you know, has to be resolved in the positive. The other issue is whether or not we wanna do a three-year lease instead of a, a, a license. The difference being that a license is normally terminable, um, um, based on much shorter notice, so it's a way for either party to get out of it, um, quicker if there's problems.
You're saying to do a lease would be better?
No, I think a license. I mean, I think, I think it should be a license, but to say it's for a term of three years is a long time, and we don't know what those three years might bring in this, in this business.
And we don't.
Where it might go, and, and what problems might develop.
Yeah.
So, you know, it feels like it ought to be a license rather than a lease. You know, it could be a three-year with an option for two, but terminable at thirty days' notice.
Okay.
Makes, makes sense to me. I think your point about some, some verbiage to, uh, articulate a public purpose, and, and that does concern me that, uh, you know, the gift clause, because obviously that's, that's prohibited. So how do we get around that, Jeff?
Well, I mean, it, it seems to me that our active tran- doesn't our active transportation plan support this?
Yes.
I mean, so.
Yeah, we even mentioned a bike share, and actually, normally, we would have to be putting money in, but because of the grants that R T S received through Reimagine R T S, we are getting this, you know, of both, uh, the cost of the bike share covered by that. So normally, we would, I mean, when we talked to, um, Pace before, we were gonna have to put money in.
So, so the verbiage, I mean, the findings could be centered around our, our, you know, I, I, it's probably in the comprehensive plan too somewhere, I would imagine. Um, but centered around our, our, the goals set forth in our A T B.
So, do you want that included in the license, or would it be, where do you, where do we need that?
That, that could be, it could be in the license. It doesn't have to be. Certainly, it would be easier if it was in the license. Then we could just know what's there and point to it. Otherwise, it could be a finding made by the board at the time of the authorization to sign the agreement. I think it's better in the license though.
Yeah, because then if we renew the license at a later date, we'll have this language preserved.
Right.
Okay, so I don't, I, um, this is like the initial, they sent us kind of, you can tell it's a, it's a basic agreement that they also sent the, the city of Rochester, so, um, I already talked to Christine Carrato, who's handling Brighton's, um, bike share, um, as well, and they're working through the same things we are. So I think this is the first pass where we're gonna take back these things, um, to them, so, um, I don't know when they'll get us a final agreement, but, um, so this is gonna be like this, the first time we've given them feedback on the agreement. So are you saying it shouldn't be called? Is it still an agreement, or do we need to?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I think, I think without highlighting the fact we're turning it from a a lease into a license, so we just put a thirty-day terminable by either party clause in there.
Okay, okay, and then, um, I was in agreement with you, and I know the board is too, cuz we talked about this last time, that we just need to get some clarity on the costs, as we were told it would be, you know, three years at no cost for the town and the village, and we just wanna, we're not gonna do anything until we, we get some clarity on that. Um, and, what's that?
But the question is, there is no cost implicit in that agreement. There's no municipal cost, so it, I don't know why you got that, not that you got it, why you received that clarification that there wouldn't be a no, there would be no cost because of the grant, because it looks like to me there should be no cost irregardless of the grant.
Right, right. No, I, I agree with you, and I asked that separately, um, as part of our, the last meeting, and, um, and I was surprised to hear that the answer had changed. So, yeah, according to the agreement, we don't have any cost, and, uh, let me see, which one was that? Um, I can go back and I thought it was under the, oh, it's under the term termination and default on ten point two, though. Um, oh, yeah, you're right. It doesn't, I, I just kind of asked that question tied to that, but it doesn't, uh, yeah, you're right. According to this, it doesn't imply that we will get. Um, so I guess I don't need to worry about that one. I can just take that out. Um, I still wanna know.
If, if we're, yeah, if we're comfortable that, that there isn't some hidden cost we don't know about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, is, are there any other big things, um, Jeff, that you?
No, I just, I just wanna have a. I, I have a que- I have a question. Um, in addition to the agreement, wouldn't this also require a non-municipal use permit because the facilities will be located in the public way?
Yes.
No.
Wait, no.
No.
No, 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 because you're covering it with this agreement.
We don't have to do.
Okay.
Okay, so what permitting do they need from us, then?
I, unless there's signage that has to go to the H P V, or there's some site plan issue that I don't understand. You know, there's nothing, the, the permitting they need is the agreement from the board.
So we don't need a non-municipal use permit?
I don't see it. You, you wouldn't need it cuz you're doing a lease.
Okay.
Or agreement, you know, you're actually, you're actually signing an agreement to allow them to use your property.
But the agreement, so it doesn't matter where they're putting the stations? Um.
Well, I'm assuming the agreement is going to be specific about where they're going.
Okay, so we need to, because they did provide us, um, she's, she's doing up, uh, a workup of a site plan for each one of the locations in the village, just so we know where the, the, the rack is gonna go and how many bikes, and, and so we, um, but I, I think I was running under the assumption that we'd need a non-municipal use permit. Um, so if we get the, the license squared away, um, you're saying we don't need any additional permitting?
Not from the trustee level. I don't know. I'll ask Stephen, I mean, we should ask Stephen a second here, but um, I would say that if they're gonna have those little site plans available, they should be attached to the agreement.
Okay, okay, um.
And, and referenced in the agreement.
Okay, okay, so add that to the agreement, okay.
Steve, and who company, who, any permitting issues?
Who covers the insurance?
They do. Oh, good question, but I sent Dorothea that note to ask Gary if that was enough insurance.
I have to still reach out to Gary. I haven't had a chance since I got back. I think you sent that over the weekend.
All right, all right, so that's, that's an important issue we have to answer. Okay, good.
Question would be, we do have a right-of-way permit. Do they need? I mean, I.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Who, who issues that?
We, I do. I, I've issued it for some of the utilities that have done some work in the, in the village.
Okay, so they need that.
So they need a right-of-way permit?
That's a good point.
That's just going through you, Steve?
Yes.
It doesn't need village approval? Okay, great, that's good to know. So right-of-way permit, um, I'll link up with you um, offline and get that, or I'll call you tomorrow, cuz I'm gonna send her, that, that's a form I can send her electronically.
Okay, now the question would be, do we charge for it, or is that something the board wants to? Because there is a fee associated with a right-of-way permit. Is that something we want to waive?
I would think, given that they're covering the cost of this, the bike share, that we should consider waiving that. That's my opinion, but I don't know how others feel.
That, who, who, the, uh, the, uh, who's covering the cost of the bike share, Renee, specifically? It's, it is.
A grant. Um, yes, through the grant through R T S.
Yeah, then, then I think that, I mean, that's a governmental entity. I, I think it's appropriate to waive, waive the fee.
Do we need to make a motion, or do we have to make an official, or is that enough?
Make a motion, waive, waive the fee because the cost of our startup bike share program is covered by the, uh, the regional transportation system, a governmental entity. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All, and, uh, Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
You're muted.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Uh, trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so before we move on from my member item, though, I, I wanted to up, update you on the two outstanding items from the, from the bike share. Um, they are still reaching out to Towpath to see how they feel about the station on Chain Place. And I spoke with Hopper today, and we explored an option of a virtual bike station where they place e-bikes at already, uh, existing bike wrecks that are um, in, uh, or that are on, uh, supplied by the village, so that may be something we can explore as a compromise if, um, you know, depending on how Towpath Bike feels, so then we could still have some, some bikes, um, available on Chain Place, and then, um, the mayor also brought up another location that we could put one down towards the town D P D park, D P W parking lot next to the canal under the Monroe Ave Bridge instead, so, um, that's, that's where, so the, the Chain Place station is still up in the air a, a little bit.
Thank you, Renee. Thank you.
Now I'm done.
Okay, other, other member items?
Ho- hold on, before we move on from that, Jeff, is there anything you need further on the whole benefit, um, question that you posed right at the beginning?
No, I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, this is a, this is a benefit to the public that we've outlined in our active transportation plan. So, I, I'm, I'm comfortable. Sorry, it's a, it's a benefit.
Yeah, okay, and, and I would add to that, the comp plan as well.
Right, and even the L W R P, if we wanna go even deeper, um, we, um, so I believe, Jeff, you said that we could, if we don't wanna write that into the license, um, into the agreement, when we adopt the agreement, we can put that into the resolution.
We could put it in the resolution, but I agree with Bob, it'd be better to keep it in the agreement, so it's always there.
Okay.
We renew it, 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 it's just better, easier.
Okay.
The, the other, just one more point before we leave this. Um, Renee, isn't this part of R T S's micro-mobility plan as they're changing their bus routes to ensure that people still have ways to move around to some of the, um, other destinations within the territory?
Yeah, and they are behaving slightly, their purpose, um, the bike share purpose is slightly different in the mobility zones because typically those are in more suburban locations, so they have a, a slight more recreational vent than a transportation vent, but there still are, there still is a goal to get people using it as transportation, so to get off the bus and, and hop on the, the bike share, so yes.
And there's a benefit for people's health, too, to encourage biking.
Well, I, I guess I see as another public benefit, the fact that you're actually attracting people to come in and park and bike around and use our businesses and everything else. So, I mean, there is, there, there is that public benefit as well.
Yes, agreed. Great, okay, any other member items from other members? Other trustees? Go ahead, Dan.
Um, so, got a, um, got an email yesterday from a Village of Pittsburgh E-News that I hadn't seen in draft form, so it was sent out by the village. And I'm gonna ask, um, that all of the trustees are at least able to review and provide input on. on village-wide communications. Now, I understand that somebody is the final editor of those things and somebody has the final approval of those things. But I was, I was really quite surprised to receive a village-wide communication that I'd never seen before. So I, I'd like to make a motion that the trust, that all of the trustees are at least given a chance to review a village-wide communication before it comes out. Do I have a second for that motion?
Can I ask a question of, a point of clarification? I can't, I thought this came from the, the office of the mayor.
Correct, it did.
But it says Village of Pittsburgh E-News.
Yeah, from the office of the mayor, that's correct.
But so if it was going on behalf of, of the village, I agree with you. I think we should all get, get a see, but I believe this came from the mayor in this case.
But, but it doesn't, it doesn't say that. It has the mayor's name on it, but it doesn't say from the mayor. It says Village of Pittsburgh. Village of, do you want me to share the screen?
Yeah, I, well, I'm looking at mine. It says news from mayor, it says Mayor Robert Corby right under it. So I wonder if the formatting looks different, but.
So, yeah, so it says here, I'll, I'll, I'll share my screen. This one. Okay, so the sender is Village of Pittsburgh, not mayor. The sender is Village of Pittsburgh, the, the village, the email address is Village of Pittsburgh, not the mayor. The header is Village of Pittsburgh.
Gotcha. So I was looking at where it says news from Village of Pittsburgh, you know, Robert Corby, so.
Right, news from Village of Pittsburgh, not from the mayor. So it does have his name on it, but all over this, this screams of being a Village of Pittsburgh email. And it's, it's really truthfully from the mayor. So I, I would request that all village-wide communications be run by the trustees. So I made a motion. Does anybody want to second it?
So I will second.
Okay. Discussing?
This is Trustee Lamphier. Could you stop sharing the screen for now? It's just because everybody's really tiny. Are you done sharing the screen? Okay, fine.
We can discuss.
I, I would agree if it would, if it was something that came from all the trustees, absolutely, no question. But every time the mayor writes something or writes a letter or I have enough to do. I don't, I don't think I want to also be reading. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, then send it from the mayor, not from the Village of Pittsburgh.
I think this is clear that it came from the mayor and the mayor is writing a, a letter. If I, if I were to try to make a comparison or find it a similar situation, I would look at the Town of Pittsburgh and see when Bill Smith writes. I don't think he's, he sends that past his board. I think he just writes it and puts his byline and there it is.
Okay, and, and I just showed all the ways that it appeared that it was coming from the Village of Pittsburgh, not from the mayor, so.
Okay, how about, we propose that we change the header to be from the office of the mayor?
Yeah, that's fine.
That satisfy it?
Yeah.
Okay. Normally, normally I would send, let, let me just make another comment. Normally I would send the draft out to everybody. Monday of this week, Marina, Dorothea and I, we're trying, struggling to get it out and we just sent it out the door. We were so anxious to get, it, it's been an ordeal to get the format to work in the content. What, what is it? Close Contact or whatever the platform is? And I'm actually grateful to Marina, who seems to be a whiz at manipulating these, these formats. It took us an afternoon. We, there were some problems with the formatting because on the, on the cell phone display, it wasn't the same as it was, say, on the laptop. So we had a lot of bugs that we had to work out. And so at the end of the day, we were kind of anxious and we just sent the thing out. Normally I would send all of you a draft of what's going out before I send it out to the public. We were just on a time crunch and really wanted to get it out, but I had no problem in doing it.
Okay.
Bob, I want to push, I want to push back gently on that. I've been pushing to get an update on 75 Monroe for years. And so this wasn't something that needed to go out that minute. And would have liked a chance to review it and improve it. So I, I don't quite agree with your response there.
Okay, okay, all right, moving on.
No, no, it's a motion, so now a roll call?
Wait, so do we need to amend it? Are we saying that, are we still saying village-wide? Any village-wide communication should go to the whole board for an opportunity to review. But if it's coming from the office of the mayor, it should say the office of the mayor.
Sure, amend, so amended.
All right.
So Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Yep, Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby. Motion passes. Motion passes.
Okay, any other member items? Okay, we are now going to.
The only one I want to put is down is the same one I always give, which is I'm, I'm in favor of sitting and negotiating directly with Mark Ford to solve the 75 Monroe mess.
Okay, we are now, I will make a motion to enter executive session to discuss pending litigation. And for Marina and Brooklyn, we, we now can excuse you. Periodically, there are, in New York State, there are several issues where we actually can have closed meetings. One of them are property negotiations, pending or, or active litigation and discussion of the performance of a specific individual. Those are examples of when the board is permitted to have a closed meeting that is not open to the public. And so we make a motion, we vote to go into executive session. It is only for discussion. No official actions can be taken in executive session. If there is an action that's proposed within that discussion, we come out of executive session and we do it in, in the public, in the public meeting. So with that, I'll say thank you for your diligence and hanging in there tonight. And I'll see both of you in the office tomorrow. And then I need a second, a second for my motion to enter executive session. Thank you Jeff, thank you Steve and Mary. Good night all, good night all.
Night.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Night.
Lily seconded the motion. Dorothea, could we have a roll call vote please?
Absolutely. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye, sorry.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Let me kill the recording and stop, lock the room.
I'm going to dismiss whoever.
This conference will now be recorded.
Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lamphier. Lily, you're muted.
You're muted, you're muted.
Lamphier, aye.
Motion passes.
You forgot to ask me, Dorothea, Corby, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
All right Renee, go ahead.
Stetser, second. Thank you Frank.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye. Good night everybody, thank you.
Everybody for the gifts. Linda did thank everybody and she was very happy with her gift basket.
Wonderful.
Awesome, good night.
Thank you. Good night everyone.
Good night.